The April 19th, 2020 regular scheduled work session. Tonight, there are four items on our agenda. Please comment. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card. And if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority of said organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Under reports and presentations, obviously, item number one, I just did this wearing in of our part-time judge with Judge Zimmerman. I'll ask, was there any public comment on that?
There was not.
Okay. And so if our city clerk would please say on the second item.
Thank you, Mayor. That second item is 2040 Comprehensive Plan Overview and Update. Mr. Bob Bishemi and Tracy Wildes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I know it's odd to see me stand up here to talk about CPAC, but I'm the newest member of the team and excited to be presenting to you tonight the status of where we're at with the CPAC plan. And you're off to a rocky start. (laughing). Where's that? I'm sorry, couldn't resist. Please keep your comments to a minimum, please.
It's not public comment period.
Okay, tonight, we're going to be updating you on the status of where we're at with Milton's Comprehensive Plan. This plan is updated every five years, and this will be Milton's third Comprehensive Plan. We are building on the last plan from 2016, and we're really focusing on important topics that are going to shape Milton's future, like market economics, land use, sustainability, smart cities, all of the things that are really going to make the future of Milton a success. Despite the fact that we have been in a pandemic for the last year with COVID, we've had an extremely active community, very involved, very engaged throughout this process. And we've held education sessions, we've had online surveys and pop-up events. And guys, the community's coming out, and they're really being vocal about what they want to see in Milton. So it's exciting, and it's validating that the things that we're doing here and the things that we're really focusing on are matching and in alignment with the community's There are three governing bodies that have oversight into this process. The first is the Department of Community Affairs, the DCA, and they sort of set the standards. The second is the Atlanta Regional Commission, the ARC, and they're going to review the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And then the third, and what I think is the most important, is you all, mayor and council. Ultimately, you all will vote to adopt the approved plan. And while this, you know, is mandatory for us to maintain our qualified local government status, it's also going to ensure that we are eligible for funding in the future. And so that's one of the biggest reasons why we want to make sure that this is done This Comprehensive Plan is a major undertaking, and it's successful because we have the right committees in place. We've had extreme involvement with our CPAC committee, and it's made up of the people listed here on your screen. This group of people have been very involved. The attendance at our events and our meetings has been very high throughout the entire process. The steering committee is a smaller group, but is dedicated and committed to meeting weekly. We meet each Friday via Zoom, and we discuss things like where are we at in the process? What are the next steps? Are we in alignment? Do we need to regroup and refocus? In this group is our outside consulting firms like TSW, and they've been extremely instrumental in helping guide the process and sort of keep making sure that we are on track. They've played a key role in that guidance. I want you to notice the two pictures to the lower right. I am one of the newest members, and so I didn't have a lot of background. And so Bob Bishemi initiated a war room. We transformed the Community Development Conference Room into CPAC Battleground. And that's just what it is. We went and gathered every plan, every document, every agenda item, every calendar item, and we've got it on the boards, we've got it on the whiteboards, we've got it on the table. We closed the door at night. We hand out tickets for admission because we don't want anything to happen in this war room. But guys, it's such a great place for someone like me who's new to the process to really get in and collaborate with our outside consultants. We had Laura Richter with TSW come in this morning, and it was fantastic. I think she was really impressed, and she really got into the weeds with us on where we're at in the process. Todd has visited. I encourage each of you to step over there and look at it because it's impressive to see what the city has been working on for the last year to put this information together. The clear message tonight is to let you all know that we're on track. We are on schedule. Our deadlines are tight, but we're confident with where we're at right now and the team that we've put together to sort of get this thing across the finish line. A few things I want to highlight. We have targeted public engagement opportunities and public comments at all the work sessions, and that's been very successful, lots of feedback. This is our second in a total of five city council briefings and work sessions. From this point forward, we will be meeting monthly, so you'll really be updated on where we're going. A key date, the next key date is May 20th. On May 20th, we will deliver the draft Comprehensive Plan. It's going to be an open house format, and that's just before summer break so that we can capture the public before everyone sort of heads out after school. And then our target date of October the 18th is where we'll have the final Comprehensive So you have been involved in one session, one on February the 8th where we had the council work session, the session tonight, which will be very informative, and then we've got four key dates coming forward. We'll review the draft recommendations on May the 10th at the council work session. June 14th, we'll review the draft Comprehensive Plan. We will get a further discussion on the capital improvement element on July the 12th, and then have a resolution to transmit on August the 9th. Again, all of these dates working up to our final date of October the 18th, where we hope that the council will vote to adopt the final plan. There's a lot of information, so I want to pause briefly and just see if anybody has any questions. With that, I'm going to hand it over to the big hitters, Todd Chernick and Bob Bishemi.
I need you close so we can stay on schedule, Bob.
And Todd, if you don't mind me, just say a couple words. We just want to thank you and all your other members for all the hard work you've done and all the involvement. So it really means a lot. You've made a big difference over the last several years, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I won't take credit because as you saw, even our newest team members has a big impact on what we're doing. The energy level is really at a really good point. But thank you for the kind words. I'm also happy to be joined by our newest member, Community Development Director, no longer interim slash city architect. But for those of you who weren't at our last work session, I think, Mayor, you might not have been here. This is the point in the show where it becomes very interactive, right? We're not here to present to you. We're going to set, you know, some key points, and we're very interested in your feedback and guidance so that we make sure that we stay on track. We do have a very tight schedule. We'll be meeting as a CPAC weekly to get to May 20th, so we don't have really much opportunity to go astray, and we're looking for you to keep us from going astray. Okay? So with that, Bob, how do I do this? Okay. So we're going to talk through three main topics. This is the meat of the update. One is to give you some insight into the comparable cities analysis that the team did, which was very insightful. As a former consultant, current consultant, I felt like it was important to look outside and see what might apply here within Milton. And when I say outside, I mean outside is Georgia and what key learnings might apply here. We'll brief you on what the themes are that we're hearing from the public and that are surfacing from our work sessions themselves and some of the hot topics. I know you always are interested in those as well, and kind of some key things that you should expect to see in terms of our recommendations. And this is a big point of where we are looking for your feedback. So from a comparable city standpoint, we looked at, and our consultant team really needs to take credit for this, TSW, looked at cities such as Lexington, Kentucky, Wellington, Florida, Aiken, South Carolina, Greenville, South Carolina, and Woodstock, Vermont. Many of these cities are uniquely rural like Milton. Many of them have a large equestrian influence like Milton, although not all. For example, Greenville doesn't. And we found some really interesting nuggets, and we categorized those nuggets into these five categories: land use and ordinances, parks, trails and green space, commercial nodes, agritourism, and partnerships and funding. And these are the themes that emerged that we felt applied most to Milton. For example, what made these cities successful in identifying their unique rural character that we might learn from? In the land use example, what we've found was zoning that supports a rural lifestyle was important, large lot zoning, for example. Having clearly defined growth and service boundaries was also uniquely important. We've traditionally relied on our land use plans and our land use maps, including our sewer map, and we've learned some other interesting tools that we'll touch on later for how to best manage growth. So those are some themes around land use that we picked up on from a parks and trail standpoint. There's some direct application here to Milton and what we aspire to be in terms of trails was a significant component in every one of these cities and a huge, not only in creating an active community, but from a marketing standpoint and a branding standpoint. Every single one of these cities markets and promotes the miles of trails that they have. Some cases, they had 60, 20, 30 miles worth of trails. We have trail plans, and that's something for us to keep in mind as we think about not just building them, but promoting them would be a significant asset for Milton. From a commercial node, we also identify from these more uniquely rural cities that they had designated commercial areas, very similar to Milton, right? We have character areas, and within those character areas, like in Deerfield is much more commercial in nature. Here we are in Crab Apples, identified as another commercial node. On a less intense scale, Birmingham Crossroads is another example of a commercial node. And those were best practices by having those clearly defined commercial nodes and therefore allowing for the rural and residential component to remain more open and rural and feel. Agritourism is something that we also picked up as a key item. There's a lot of discussion at council already regarding agritourism, things like wineries and breweries and working farms and farmers' markets were generally, bed and breakfasts, generally discussed as key features for these cities that they marketed as far as a visitor's bureau, as far as events. And the last thing was, key learning was around partnerships and funding. How did they do this? How did they get to this point? Good plans, but they also needed to figure out how they were going to fund those plans. And we learned a lot from this study regarding economic development. We learned a lot about public-private partnerships, more traditional things such as grants and bonds or vehicles that were used to help fund these features that these comparable cities, as we call it, offer. So before I jump ahead, is there any questions regarding observations regarding these comparable cities? You support what we're trying to do, which is looking from the outside to see what might apply here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, with that, then we'll jump ahead. So what are we as a CPAC and what is our community speaking out regarding? And these are the themes that we're hearing pretty consistently in terms of placemaking and what makes Milton a unique place to call home. Starts with the large lot residential. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. The green space, trails, and parks are something that we obviously value and is community values. We put dollars behind that with the latest bond for more green space. And as we learned in our, you'll hear later in our pop-up session that we had this week, this weekend at Bell Memorial Park, people really embrace our parks, both active as well as those that are more trail-oriented. We're also hearing very consistently, we don't want big box retail, we want local businesses and restaurants. Seven Acres up in Birmingham Crossroads is a great example. The Union over here closer to Freemontville, that's what the community wants. We're here to share that with you and emphasize that we're hearing that consistently. Something that we're hearing more of that we don't offer maybe as much of is our markets, whether those are farmers' markets, whether it's just events around our working farms and/or craft-oriented markets. Those are something that brings the community together. Now that we have this Crab Apple area as one example with the green, maybe there's more opportunities. Public is certainly seeking, as you'll hear later, other public venues to create other public venues to bring people together. Farms and gardens, whether that's a community garden or supporting and incentivizing the working farms that we have to retain them is certainly a theme that we're hearing consistently. Public arts, whether that be our public art in terms of our roundabouts, wall murals, people want to see more of that. Craft manufacturing, wineries and breweries as other agritourism features, and certainly embracing our rural and equestrian heritage is... These are the themes that our community wants to retain. Those seem consistent with what you hear, besides the complaints that you obviously hear plenty of. Are these the positive things that you hear from the community? You're laughing, Joe.
Yeah, no complaints? No, we don't do...
No, you don't get those. Junk folder. In seriousness, do these sound consistent with what you would have expected?
I think that they are. The questions that I've got, I mean, because you bring up some good things that we've been talking about forever, and are they, is the feedback that you're getting just about these subjects in general, or are they about getting the city more involved in sponsoring some of these things? And I'll pick on farmer's market as an example because there's a way that private owners of farms and land and those kind of facilities could sponsor that type of activity. It could be done for the benefit of the community without the involvement of the city, but there's also a way for the city to play a more important role and sponsor it or provide for the venue or whatever it happens to be. What does, where does this cross over into being something that the city needs to focus on in terms of sponsorship and where we need to just be policy-driven to help enable that from a private sector point of view?
So I think creating the venues is something where you need to be more, the city, we've heard, needs to be more active in creating the venues for that. But we've also heard, and this was, I think, surprising, not surprising, it wasn't intentional. We weren't seeking this out. But branding and marketing is a significant theme that we're hearing and a best practice that we've learned from other municipalities, that intentionally branding and marketing the city, we started off doing that in a, you know, with the horse, right? It's way more than that. It's events and connecting people to our green spaces and our parks and our farmers' markets. And so it becomes, we think, and you'll hear, an opportunity for the city to take a more active role.
I'd like to offer something in addition to that, Todd, and this is for you, Joe, because it's been interesting, as Laura and I participated as ex officio members of this, to watch the evolution of what's happened and the kinds of engagement the community is offering up to us. I think about the last couple of CPACs that I was involved in, it was really about the core things when we were creating the city. It was about making sure our infrastructure was right, that our police force was properly staffed, that we had the right fire and emergency responses. And it's now we've crossed that threshold into, we've demonstrated to the community that's here that we're a good-running city. And now they're getting to the amenities part. So we're getting more engagement on parks and markets and branding, saying, okay, I feel good about, we've got a good foundation for that. Now let's engage on some of the things that make us take advantage of the unique offerings that we have. How do we make sure that we offer all those next generation of ideas to the community facilitated by the city in many cases?
Now, yes, yes. Our neighboring municipalities, whether that's Alpharetta or up in Forsyth at Halcyon, have taken an approach of creating a mixed-use forum, mixed-use concept of forum to bring people together. We have an opportunity to do it in a unique way, right? In a more open space rural way, not necessarily building dense infrastructure. And that's, so we're hearing that too. We don't want to become Alpharetta. That's not what the community is asking for. But connecting people and connecting to make more sustainable large lot rural equestrian estates, building those connections is something that people are expecting now. And I think, Paul, that's a great observation. You know, we're beyond the blocking and tackling phase of building our city. Now it's taking the next step and accelerating some things. And we'll talk about specific projects to accelerate in the interest and feedback from the community. I'm going to ask Bob to emphasize some of the new themes. Some of them you've heard before, some have emerged. But if you wanted a one-pager that says, hey, what's the CPAC hearing and expecting to tackle? This is probably your one-pager.
Good evening. All right, so I just want to tell the council that overall, the feedback we've been getting from the community and CPAC at large has been very favorable. In speaking with people Saturday at the pop-up, people are generally very happy with what the city's been doing, and they're extremely happy with this council, mayor, on how you have envisioned the city and way you've taken us from the past into the future. So all that feedback has just been...
Oh, excuse me, Bob. Where did you find these people?
I was actually kind of, really kind of, I was sitting there taking it all in. I'm like, yeah, well, this is great.
Still in his honeymoon phase?
I'm still in my honeymoon phase. I can't help it.
Were both of them there at the same time?
Yeah. It was really good. So it was kind of difficult because for a while with CPAC, we were just looking at kind of reviewing everything that we have done in the past and then said, geez, everything is good, you know? And then we really tried to extract from them some hot topics to say, all right, really, let's really put the pen to the paper, let's really sit down and figure out what are some of the topics that we really want to focus on. We all know it's good, it's going in the right direction, we're kind of happy with it, but we can make it better, right? You can always make everything better. So we try to extract some of these. One of the, I'll just go through these because then we have subsequent slides that will embellish on each one. But one of the big ones is a new term for the city of Milton, but not really a new term in the planning or at the state level or nationally. And it's this urban growth boundaries. And we're going to go through it in more detail, but generally what an urban growth boundary is, is just a way to limit growth going forward. And we'll get into it much more in a subsequent slide, but it is a way to do it. Generally, like Todd said in the past, you know, we've been running with the sewer map as sort of a way to deal with that. But there are other tools out there that the state of Georgia and the DCA utilize and encourage, and we started looking into these and saying, geez, maybe these are better tools to add to our tool chest to really ensure that this council, future councils, would keep the same theme of what we've been doing and how we created Milton, what's important, right? Some of the other ones, of course, was branding and marketing. That's huge. Everybody wants branding and marketing, and I'll just say briefly that you're looking at citywide branding, and then you're looking at neighborhood or character area branding, you're looking at branding areas that, you know, maybe are equestrian zones. Instead of having overlays, we just kind of brand them, and then people just kind of know that you're in there because the overlay is just simply a, you know, a line on a piece of paper somewhere. We could just kind of identify this more visually, and just people kind of know where they are. It's sort of like when you enter into Crab Apple, you sort of know you're in Crab Apple. So that was very important that we extracted. Of course, the larger, larger lot ordinance updates. We've been doing a lot of that, and the council's approved a lot of this at a voluntary level, and it's been successful. I can honestly say at my next staff meeting next week or whenever I'm up here again, I think it's next week, I'm going to give you more examples of how we've been actually very successful on large lots. And people, I'm going to show you the ones where they came in with singles, one acres, and we've gone to three. But again, there's more that we can do to incentivize the small hobby farm or just the use of this land that we've talked about already, you know, maybe accessory dwellings, putting barns in the front yards closer to the yard, you know, to the lot lines and stuff. So there's different things that we'd like to explore, and I think CPAC wanted that as well. Road and pedestrian safety is huge. Oh, I'm sorry. Accelerate, funding, I think of key projects. Yeah, they did bring this up. They were all very anxious about all the programs that we're looking at. And I think a lot of these were, we have various boards and committees that are engaged, like the trail plan and the parks plans and the equestrian group. And everybody's sitting in there saying, geez, these are all really good, and we're getting great feedback, and they're all subject matter experts. Is there a way we can accelerate some of these projects? Maybe that might mean bonds, maybe that might mean public-private partnerships. There's all different ways we can, right? Look at these and explore, which we'll go through. Roadway and pedestrian safety. Tonight, we're going to have another work session item just on road safety. But looking at it even more, that's one piece of the pie. We're looking at it more holistically, like, you know, pedestrian safety within the city areas, within the rural areas, walkability in certain areas, how do we induce this? There's a big demand right now for communities that are very walkable and have trails, and how do you connect those trails to other trails? And, you know, how do we really embellish on our green space areas? And again, we're doing a lot of it, but it was nice to see CPAC really wanted it as a hot topic, which really, you know, it's sort of our roadmap to push staff into these areas and to really put more resources into them. Recycling is another big one, and we're trying to work on that as well. But of course, you know, we haven't done the work session on recycling per se as far as solid waste and things, so I want to wait till that occurs to see more about that feedback. But... But a lot of people are interested in, in recycling and keeping things sort of globally as the word sustainable, I mean, it's overused, but they sort of do have a strong impact on that. Mixed use development is really, is really a big hot topic. I mean, from our economic study team, they came in and said, all these other places like, you know, these, these campus style commercial nodes that say the city of Alpharetta has, they're all ailing and dying because people aren't really going there. Corporations don't want to go there because the, the people want to live and work, live, play. This is giving us as a city a much greater edge because we do have developments that are coming, especially in Deerfield, that have been coming in, and I'm going to be presenting some of these in the near future because I'm finally getting them in and they're becoming public. So then once they give them to me, it's public and I can show them to you all and start sharing these. But we are pushing these developments to become work, live, play. So we're, we're really kind of ahead of where we need to be. There's all these other counties, like Cherokee County came in and said, gee, Bob, you know, we're, we're just not there yet. We, we're back, we got to write all the codes and get the form base approved and do all, I mean, they're three, four years out. By then, it's almost too late. Things change. So we will, we're on the forefront of this and it was nice to see CPAC saying they really wanted to encourage that. And I, I will tell you, we have a little bit of it here in, in Crab Apple, we're going to have a bigger push in Deerfield. And it's really going to take Deerfield off. It's, Deerfield's been sitting there and a lot of people look at me and go, what's, what's happening on the other side and how's that looking? It's rolling out. It is absolutely rolling out. And economics has got a lot to do with it because the economy's picking up and that land value is good, infrastructure's been getting improved. And the next one is this expanded, expanded agritourism options. I think from, without getting into the weeds, we do have subsequent slides, but just quickly, they, they did think this was an important, important asset and facet of what we can do as a rural community to really embellish on these. And I, I think the feedback I'm getting is just, they want it, but they're worried about level of intensity. You know, like, can we do it, but can we do it at smaller scales that, you know, we don't really want to do it at a large scale where we become like a big commercial kind of node out in the rural area? Can we do it small? So we're, we're going to keep going with this. Let's, okay. So though, you want to take this or you want to, it's up to you.
So we, Tracy, first of all, before we, before we jump to this, Bob, let's go back on. As I said, this is the one pager as it stands today. Sorry to speak in consultant business terms, but from what Bob has shared, I'd really be interested in your feedback, your interactions on, on these topics. And we, we will drive deeper, but this will help us know where to drive deeper. Go for it, Joe.
Okay. So urban growth boundaries, well, I think it's an intriguing idea and certainly the city has policies that influence what we could call urban growth boundaries, right? Because it's all about zoning, it's all about land use. At the same time, it also crosses over into a delicate subject, which is, you know, property owners' rights and things like that. So do you think that item number one is under the, in the context or within the control of what we already have established as character zones and, and everything else? Or does this mean some kind of a relook at what kind of planning we're doing or what planning we want to do?
It's an excellent question. And it's probably the number one fear of municipalities is taking, right?
Right.
Taking a property rights. There's a really good article that we will get to you from DCA regarding that. The short answer is that's not what we're looking to do.
Okay.
What, what I think they were really looking to do with the urban growth was to kind of contain what it is we have now.
Then the existing boundaries.
What the existing boundaries are. So they sort of said, look, you know, we have Birmingham corners and it's there, right? It's, it's so many acres, it's defined. But, you know, what happens if we don't put this line? And, and that's an area that doesn't have sewer, public sewer, right? I mean, I know it has the package plant, which limits it a little bit, but I guess their thinking is what's going to present, prevent future councils from saying, you know what, why don't we just go ahead and start expanding that? Why don't we just start, you know, adding to it? Let's keep it growing. Because there's so much development pressure that's exerted and it sort of helps councils to say, wait, we have this line, it was developed for a reason, and it's not just that, that's what the master plan called for, there's a physical line. So we, we identified that limitation of growth. And yes, councils have a method of saying, okay, we want to amend that map, just like we do with the sewer map. But it's sort of, it's a lot of emphasis on it. When, when somebody comes here and says, council, can you amend the sewer map? It sort of becomes a big thing. You know, it's not something that's just taken lightly. I know this council takes that very seriously and looks at it because we have that limitation. But these boundaries would just give you more of that ammunition than if somebody was to challenge you, you'd say, wait, we've established this and we don't, we certainly don't want it to expand. So yes, everything that's here now is, would stay as it is, we're not looking to change. I don't think CPAC was looking to change it. They were just looking to give you another tool to strengthen and reinforce that limitation of growth.
And I would, I would add to that, Bob, and you can, you can correct me where if I stray on this, is we look at some of the other growth areas that are likely to come to Milton, thinking about Arnold Mill in particular, where the sewer map has historically been kind of a threshold for us and it gives those parameters to us about where true heavier commercial can exist. When we get outside of that and look at Birmingham Crossroads or Arnold Mill, where sewer doesn't exist today, it's another layer of credible, nationally recognized or, or community recognized tools to ensure we don't always have to fall back to the sewer map when there are other tools like that that can help make us credible in how we're going to measure those, those new business areas.
Well, I know in, in the past, we really have relied on the comprehensive land use map, that, the plan, that's part of where we define, this is what we're going to be about, this is where we go. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that there wasn't a push to say, even in our commercial nodes, I mean, we've been careful with what we've done with the residential and how that all interacts. We don't want to just throw it up in the air and say, oh, more people are interested in doing dense development. That's part of what's defined Milton for all this time. And when we formed the city, that's really what we were concerned about and everybody used before that with Fulton County, just the sewer map. And we said, you don't have to use a sewer map, we can decide, design our zoning and determine where we want this to be. So I'm glad to hear that they actually wanted to keep it the way it is right now, not, and then what you've been talking about is actually refining and better use of the spaces that we already do have by looking at a mixed use.
Even just quick, even it helps a lot on redevelopment areas. So like if you look at Deerfield, instead of saying, okay, council's just going to keep expanding density further north, what happens is when you say no because of an urban, urban growth boundary, what happens is those developers, there's still pressure to build them, right? There's still pressure that people say there's a desire to have this. So what they do is they go back into, say, Deerfield instead of leapfrogging over it. They say, okay, we're going to redevelop some of these areas, we might knock down some buildings and build new ones, you know, to increase what, what it is that, to meet those demands. So we kind of keep the development occurring in there and, and the other areas where there's existing shopping centers and things, don't get blighted because they end up almost forcing people to redevelop them because there's no possibility to grow. But the demand is there, right? There's a demand to grow, but instead of building it out further, what we do is we just contain it. So it just keeps the, the existing businesses thriving even more.
Well, I like the way, even when you did Crab Apple, you looked at a different solution from a parking standpoint, because before we always thought, it's all linear, we're going to just open up and you have to have so many spaces. But when we did that, you can see what we have right now. We've got big boxes with large parking lots. And there may be a more efficient way, when you look at design, to better utilize that space.
And we're starting to see that with the new developments that are coming in. Say that the land values are so great that it warrants having structured parking or, you know, instead of big fields of, of parking. So it's, it's a way to contain that and force the redevelopment that we really want to see happen in those areas.
Now, we recognize we have some education to do on this topic as a board and as a council and as a community, and we'll get there. But this is, this is an emerging topic that we think is going to be a really useful tool for our city. And in addition to, as you pointed out, Rick, our land use map, which has historically been our point of defense, like with the sewer property, for example, or our sewer map, which has been another line of defense, this becomes then a third line of defense for some of those pressures. And you'll see in our next slide, market economics, the forecast for this area are straight up. And so the demand for development is going to be off the charts. And so how we manage that and the tools that we have are going to be, are going to be even more important. Any additional comments or questions on our, the hot topics? So from a market economics standpoint, we've, we've heard consistently from our outside consultants, the market analysis that's been done, high demand is forecasted across all housing categories and all commercial products, office, retail and restaurant for Milton, with the only exception being hotels. That's not forecasted to be high. So the other thing is, from a community standpoint, we recognize and we've heard consistently that growth shouldn't be at the expense of what makes Milton desirable today, which is the fact that we are uniquely rural. So getting back to this tool, if we can do that growth smartly, we can, we can walk and chew gum, right? This was a very interesting insight for us. You know, we have a strong tax base, we have increasing property values, we have increasing home values. Milton is a desirable place to be. So we have the luxury of being a little bit picky and choosy, a lot picky and choosy, if I'm being honest with you. That's what we've heard, this is not my opinion, this is what we, we have data to support that. So we have a strong tax base. You guys are going through the budgeting process, you'll be looking at that in more detail. But generally, we have a strong tax base. So we can be measured in how we are planning and planning for growth. That means retaining very targeted commercial nodes and high density residential, very targeted. Currently, it comprises 5% of our land in Milton. And we also then have the luxury of preserving the majority of our land use, which is low density residential, agricultural and equestrian. That comprises 62% of our land. So we can retain those, those features and financially maintain our strong bond ratings and, and a strong tax base. Because once it's developed, it's gone. Some of those unique features are gone. You can't, you're not going to undevelop them and turn them back into rural. So mixed use concepts are attractive. You heard us mention that before, Joe and Rick, we talked about that pretty extensively in the last meeting. And what, what we've heard and what Bob's, this is the, it's been bishemied, you know, the architecture, the look and feel of those mixed use concepts are really important to people. The features in those mixed use concepts, green spaces, trails, having public venues, whether it's gathering places or maybe a small, you know, amphitheater, public art, those are things that will make us different than some of the Avalons of the world, if you will. Not to put Avalon down, but we have the opportunity to be different and unique with some of those features and maybe some iconic landmarks. Bob will talk about that later. Now, so that, so the economics was one area of, of study. Second area of study has been around land use itself. We broke, I really broke this up into four categories, really how do we manage growth? The parks, public venues and green space really are kind of the four main themes that have emerged regarding land use. And I'm going to let Bob take the, the managed growth piece, some of which we've already emphasized, but it's worth making it clear.
Yeah, I don't want to be repetitive on some of this, but managed growth is important. And I think it was a, it was a hot topic from CPAC because of course, everybody knows that there's a tremendous amount of external pressure to, to build in Milton, especially the fact that the economic report had different shades of blue and we were like the darkest blue in the whole state. We beat out just about everything that, any other place in the state, including Buckhead, which was very surprising. People are moving out of Buckhead to come to Milton. So it's just amazing because of COVID, I think a lot of people are exiting cities. There used to be a big draw to get into cities, now there's a big draw to get out of cities. The problem is nobody really wants to go to like a pure rural area where you have to drive 40 minutes to get a gallon of milk. So Milton has it all. You're, you're in the rural area and you're looking at cows and horses and in two minutes you're in the city and you're getting a gallon of milk and you got best, best schools, best hospitals, best shopping, best everything, great, great entertainment. You got, you know, public arts, visual arts. So people really like that. So that, that's where the demand.
That's the secret sauce.
It's the secret sauce to Milton, it is.
That even these other comparable cities don't have. One of the questions that one of our board members asked, I thought it was very insightful, none of the comparable cities that we looked at are near a major metropolitan area.
Yep.
But we are, but we're, we're kind of an escape that have access to.
It's just something that's really unique to our area and other, other like, you know, you can, you can cross the line and go to Cherokee County, you're just not getting it. And, and this is what they're coming in saying, only Milton's really got this formula to offer. And it's driving the prices crazy. So the managed growth is there. We went over large lot ordinances and incentives. I really have great news on large lot incentives and I think we should keep looking at them and keep providing newer incentives to make sure that we really encourage the type of uses that we're looking for. The same thing with, you know, agritourism, which is the wineries. I think, again, people just said not large venues. That's what the feedback we got. They said, Bob, we'd love, when these things are smaller, people are there, we don't even know they're there, but they're great to have. We just don't want really big venues. We don't, we want to keep the scale down to a rural level. I thought that was good feedback there. Thoughtful redevelopment along Highway Nine corridor, Deerfield, mixed use. This is really coming. I, I got nothing but good news about Deerfield. I, I've been, I'm seeing it ahead of time. I don't want to give away the, the story, but it's just great news on Deerfield. Listen, we've worked hard on Deerfield for a long time and everybody keeps saying, Bob, when is Deerfield going to explode? And I'm really here to tell you, Deerfield is exploding from a planning stage and it's moving. They're, they're coming in and they're doing it. And the way we're setting it up is, in a sense, is like small little nodes that are going to be within Deerfield because even A R C said, look, you know, just to try to do a pure corridor type of development, it really isn't something that will benefit the area. It's more of these little nodes. So we're trying to get people to accumulate property, sort of what we did here in, in Crab Apple. So in Crab Apple, we had like eight owners of that other quadrant. They were all arguing, we got two of them to come in and buy everybody else out and we were able to do our master plan. I'm doing the same thing now in Deerfield. We have a few, a bunch of develop, a bunch of landowners, few people coming in, buying up the properties. We're accumulating properties up to 38 acres. So it's, it's a nice size parcel. And then you can really make a difference when you have 38 acre development. That's when you have something that can have parks and trails and amphitheaters and all sorts of mixed use criteria. And the, the same thing with planning on a mill. Now, on a mill has, has come up, we, we're not doing a small area plan as part of the CPAC.
That's new, that's new information.
That's new information. I think initially we were trying to do that with timing, the way the timing is running, we don't want to rush through that. What we'd rather do, CPAC felt that it would be better if we just put it down as a work plan on them. And then we, immediately, once we finished the, the whole program and the comp plans adopted, we then jump right into the on a mill and kind of, we've done it once before, we're going to renew that, study it better and really figure out possibly where we went wrong the first time or what went wrong and what we needed to do to kind of get that resurrected. Because I really think that on a mill is the next viable area for some commercial nodes at a limited, at a limited scale, but some commercial nodes that would be there. I think it was always envisioned that way as part of our overall scheme. And I don't want to deviate from that because I think it's just kind of accepted that on a mill would, would service that way, especially with, with the, the road systems that we have there. More active parks and facilities, these became really, really big and I think the big And I think the big push there was to accelerate the bonding, the bond funding. They really wanted to make sure that we we kind of fund this. We've identified a lot, passive and active. I think we've gone through and said, where are they in the city? There's a big demand for more of them in Deerfield, but land values are very high there. And it's very difficult for the city just to come out and stop purchasing property that's at a premium. So what we're doing is when we do these developments, putting in there that they have to give me 10% of the land area for park. So if you have 38 acres, I've got a four acre park coming in, which is sizable. And that that can come in and act as, and maybe even more than that. That's just the minimum that I've been pushing for. So it's kind of nice if we can get the development in to do it and then either give it to the city or take care of it. More public venues. Well, there's always a strong sense for outdoor amphitheaters. And I'd like to have them on both sides, you know, both here. We're doing one here. We're putting an amphitheater right here in the green. That's fencing is out there. We've been planning that for a long time. And now we're going to, and I've got one planned in Deerfield as well. So I think that would be a nice balance so we can have events occurring on both sides of the city. Farmers markets, community gardens, been trying to push for some community gardens. Haven't been too successful there. We tried to do it here in Crabapple and I don't know, I tried to get the developer to do it and the community, I think, is against it. But I got to look into that more because it's kind of a great tool, but I just haven't hit a home run on that. And farmers markets too, we've been trying to do farmers markets and we've been somewhat not as successful in that arena. So actually spent Sunday up in Jasper because one of their big focus focus points, their whole branding is farmers markets. So their Jasper farmer's market is their whole key to their branding. So I'm trying to study their branding to see really where we are. And I think that CPAC is supporting all of that. More green space, because I guess we can never have enough green space.
I just have a comment on the on the bullets here. All agree with them, but I I think we also need to do some basic work to the green space that we have to get it open. You know, you know, putting a liability release sign at Freemanville and Birmingham Road. Those little farms in that area would, those those equestrian facilities would cross that road and walk over on those properties if we could make that happen. Fishing at the Birmingham and Bethany Lake, that's the reason we bought that property is to have the whole lake to fish at. And I think that that goes with branding is, you know, our our green space is passive, but it's also useful in some basic ways that you can't do anywhere else. I'd love to see camping in Birmingham Park with, you know, a permit, things that you have to go to North Georgia to do, you can do in Milton and maybe that's part of our marketing and but the the residents that live here, those are easy things that we can do, so.
Yeah, and CPAC came up with some pretty cool ideas. They said, listen, you know, maybe we don't do this all on our own. Alpharetta has an equestrian facility that they own and support, but we have the green space to go riding on that they don't. They're limited. They just have the facility. We have 200 acres where people can actually go and do friendly rides. So maybe we kind of keep joining forces with other people and say, hey, you know, the cities, neighboring cities, to say, listen, you know, we we have something to offer and you have something to offer. Maybe we can partner and, you know, strengthen that use collectively. So I thought that was another great idea that they had that we'd like to look into from a staff perspective.
Main, besides the managed growth piece, the main takeaway in the parks, green spaces and trails is, as Laura emphasized, there's a significant support for those public features and to accelerate the funding of those public features. So that will likely, that's going to be a recommendation for you to consider as a bond going forward. For example, as one lover to accelerate some of the funding.
Just to clarify though, too, what Laura's saying is it's not necessarily just about the funding. It's about getting the assets that we have open.
Yes, we have over 70% support to build out the trails in our existing green spaces. We have the plans and people overwhelmingly want to do it, is what we've heard. Yes, that's a good fine point.
Yeah, I thought it was funny, just quick, CPAC members came out and said, when we first did the trail plan, most of the community was against it. Now, two, three years later, it's been brewing and sitting around. Now everybody's decided they really think it's the best thing since sliced bread. So now they really want to push for it. And they thought as a, you know, the full committee turned around and said, isn't it funny the way people turn around? Initially, they hear an idea, it's sort of apprehensive and now they've, now they're totally seeing it and embracing it. And so I just wanted to give you that feedback that the community is feeling like, maybe this is a good thing. Maybe we, you know, we were, we were just kind of a little jumpy and.
Apprehensive.
Apprehensive.
Just like they were about roundabouts when they started. Now they want more, right? It's now unique in identifying Milton. We'll speed this up a little bit. I know we only have two and a half hours with you.
Don't skimp on it, Peter.
You didn't get the memo, did you?
But I don't want to steal, I don't want to dilute, I should say, the importance here of these next topics. Branding, marketing and placemaking is an untapped opportunity in Milton. Let's just leave it at that, okay? It's an untapped opportunity in terms of what we call placemaking, which is connecting people in places. We have character areas. I would venture to say most residents couldn't name any of them, right? Other than Crabapple or Deerfield. So there's a big opportunity with with connecting people to places, creating a sense of place. And you can do that in a lot of creative ways, signage, which has been done here in Crabapple. But the branding and marketing pieces digitally, I think we've all understood the value of some digital things and how we can accelerate. We don't necessarily have to build a visitor center. We could start by doing that digitally. What's the first thing you do when you go to New Town? What's going on, right? And you look it up online. So we can do that pretty quickly and at a relatively low cost. I won't steal the thunder from Sarah and others regarding the transportation and mobility topics you guys are going to be discussing, I think, later today and road safety. But I would just emphasize and echo that it's a consistent concern, the speeds on the roads, the road conditions, the shoulders, lighting, pedestrian interactions. We have some, so traffic and speed calming and pedestrian safety are themes that we hear consistently. You'll hear, I'm sure, later, walkability in the commercial nodes as we're putting a roundabout in Birmingham Crossroads. They'd like that to, you know, connect to some of the businesses that are there so you can actually walk to the businesses and make it more vibrant. Bicycle, we touched on that last time. Bike routes and bike friendly roadways are going to be something that I'm certain is coming from this this group. Go ahead. Sustainability, Bob emphasized recycling is as a big item making, enabling easy access for residents for a broad range of recycling options. That's, that's the end game that you'll be hearing from us in terms of a goal. Green policies, we have those which are primarily emphasizing our commercial and city government assets, but there's opportunities to extend some of those green policies into our subdivision plans. So instead of having a traditional detention pond as, what's the development off of web? Kensley? And Kensley has has a pocket park instead of a detention pond. The city wants to see more of that. Smart cities, technology, this goes with our branding, broadband ready. Imagine that you're connected to broadband when you're in these public venues that we're talking about and you're in the trail system. It serves a safety feature, but also a marketing feature. There's opportunities to seek that designation and therefore some funding assistance through DCA on that. We saw some pretty cool, and Sarah may talk about this later, in terms of roadway safety, lighted crosswalks, some pretty interesting technology that's out there, flashing beacons. You've seen some of those already. There's some visions regarding real time interactions with the automobile that might, back to the connected broadband, that might help us with suppressing some traffic speeds, alerting to pedestrians, type of school zones, which, by the way, if you, I won't go on mic, so box with that. Digital kiosks, another way of wayfinding and just connecting people to places are certainly tools that we're we're hearing about. I think, is this the last? This is the last?
And then engaged community implementation. So I just want the council to know that from us, all the different committees we have as subject matter experts, the CPAC really wanted them to weigh in on what we think. They were very strong about that these committees should not be setting policy in any way, that it's the council's sole purpose to set policy, but that they would be the subject matter expert and they would come in and, and we do use them to the fullest. I mean, we meet with them, we're engaged. I know Steve's really very active in making sure that staff is constantly engaged with these committees, getting feedback from them. We're meeting with them regularly. What would you like? How do you think? What, you know, bring us the information so that they sort of inform us from the staff perspective because, you know, we don't know what, they're really the subject matter. The bicycle community is, they're real experts at what they do. They're riding every day, I'm not. Same thing with equestrian, same thing with the trail committees. So it's, it's really kind of nice for staff to kind of get this feedback from these committees. And I think CPAC really was very interested in making sure that we keep them engaged and that we keep listening to what they're saying from a subject matter expert input. And then, and then we just bring it back to council and the council would sort of say, okay, then these are the policies we need to create.
The Bob and Todd show is almost over.
Yeah, we're here. Almost here. So I guess are we on track with our planning? Is there something that you think where CPAC has missed or has they overlooked something? Or is there any concern on the council's behalf on the items that we talked about?
Hey, I just want to say y'all are doing a fantastic job. I mean, when Paul chaired this 10 years ago and I chaired it five years ago, y'all, this is like nothing. I mean, y'all are blowing it out of the park and y'all are doing everything great. So thank you.
Thanks. But, you know, I think it's worth saying what Paul, restating what Paul said, you know, we also have citizens that are much more informed and capable than we were 10 years ago when we started this.
And they're all benefiting from. All the hot topics that we have, that we're hearing. It's great.
Yeah, I would would agree. Very impressive on what you guys have done.
Makes our job easier, too. I mean, really.
All right, so next, and next and final, before we, before we leave, are there any last minute questions for us? We like to talk. Bob spent 15 minutes picking out this tie today.
I picked 15 minutes to pick out my tie, so I hope everybody likes it.
Ties are really nice, Bob.
I went for something dynamic. I picked out all these ties that were like kind of timid and everything. I'm sitting, I'm just looking at these dull ties. I kind of get something fine.
Todd, are you guys going to go ahead into a timeshare presentation now?
There will be donuts after the session, though.
Yeah.
I had an interesting comment by a constituent made to me yesterday, speaking about timeshare. He said, I realized the other day that I live in a resort called Milton. He said, if I think about it, my home is the high end hotel. Within a short distance, I have access to high quality, fine dining. I have amenities like equestrian or farmers markets or other things that are, you know, Milton is now becoming known for. He said, it dawned on me, I live in this resort called Milton and all those assets are here. So think about that as maybe a marketing tool, a branding tool.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jackie Lim. I'm the newest member of Community Development Department and I'm here to present to you a little bit of upcoming events. But, you know, I'm also, like Tracy Wild, I'm also new to comprehensive planning. So once upon a time, Bob just approached me one day and said, Jackie, I'm going to throw you into the wolves. Gear up, you're going to to battle. I was like, what? What I'm going to do? And then I'm thankful for our war room, which kind of helped me, you know, okay, so this is where we are in the process. These are the important things that we have to do from here on forward. So I'm pretty excited to be part of a team and working with a dynamic team like Bob, our consultants from T S W. And yes, and especially in the last critical stages of comprehensive planning. So let me start, I would like to share with you the upcoming key events, but before that, let me just give you a recap of what meeting session and public engagement have already taken place since the last February 8 update. So firstly, we have three community events. We've completed that. We provide information to the public regarding placemaking and economic sustainability, transportation and smart cities technologies. And we also have our two CPAC work session on February 25 and March 25, which of course, the topics are outlined here, briefings and form-based codes and so on. Next one, we have our, the most recent CPAC session was held last week. It was actually a collaborative and very engagement, very engaging meeting. It's also interesting to learn about historical stories like how Birmingham Crossroads got its name and also Birdhouse. So which, I came from another state, so coming here, learning about this information is like, okay, this is what Milton, you know, makes them unique, this character, this rural lifestyle, this heritage. Next one is we launched our first virtual public engagement forum and it's still open today. It will close on April 29th. So this is an interactive online map where citizens can leave their comments or feedback about what they wanted to see in Milton's in the next 20 years. Next one, we have, actually this Saturday, we have a pop up, our first pop up event at Bell Memorial Park. It's a in-person education and interaction about the 2040 comprehensive plan. It was actually, it turned out to be a very nice day. I saw council members Paul Moore and Laura Bentley stopped by and said hi to everyone. And it was, it turned out to be a, we obtained a lot of good feedbacks and comments from the community. All right, so now we're going to upcoming key events. So we have a few more to go before we finally finish with the comprehensive plan. Our next pop up event will be at Crabapple Starbucks. That's going to be on May 1st. We also have a virtual public engagement. This is the second one. Similar to the first one, this is also an interactive map where we talk about transportation and sustainability. Three more work sessions coming up. Next week, we have one which we're going to discuss about solid waste, deer field economics and character, character area narratives. And then the last two, one is probably the last critical sessions. We're probably spending more time on this one. So I'm pretty excited. And lastly, public open house. We held on May 20th. That's going to be, it will take place over there in the Community Place Plaza. So here, we're going to introduce the draft plan for public review of our comprehensive. So I think that's it. With short, I'm going to turn over to Todd or Bob for questions.
You're on your own now.
Oh, really? See, they throw me into the wolves.
They threw you into the wolves.
Yeah.
I do want to say thank you so much and welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Glad to hear.
Okay. All right. Again, you know, very impressive, all of you and all the volunteers and council members here that are part of CPAC and we just appreciate it and, and a lot of great information, a lot of great work you've done. So all our citizens should be proud and appreciate. So, um, all our citizens should, uh, should, uh, be proud and appreciate everything you've done. So. Alright Tammy, if, uh,
The next presentation item is local road safety plan. Chief Rich Austin. And Sarah Leters.
Greetings mayor, members of council. I would just like to come to you, uh, to offer an update on our local road, uh, safety plan. And I'd just like to start with a short video that just, uh, goes over at a very high level, a local road safety plan and the benefits of instilling one within the community.
Over the last few years, FHWA estimates that approximately 40% of the nation's roadway fatalities occurred on local roads. So what are local agencies doing to change this trend and make their roads safer? They're making a plan, a local road safety plan. Local road safety plans are proven to help reduce severe crashes on local road systems. They provide a framework to identify, analyze and prioritize roadway safety issues and countermeasures to address them. The plans all include some common steps, but they're tailored to reflect your community's needs. Let's drive through a few. It's important to identify stakeholders early on. These can include law enforcement, public health, emergency medical services or elected officials. And it's okay to start small. This will be your team working together to save lives. Next, gather your roadway safety data. Don't have great data? You might have more than you think. You can use information like numbers of crashes, maintenance logs, safety audits, even traffic violations. The key is to start with the data you have available and grow it over time. Analyze your data to identify overrepresented crash types in areas that have the highest risk for future severe crashes. Then choose low-cost, proven solutions to address those locations. The Federal Highway Administration's list of proven safety countermeasures and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's countermeasures that work are good places to start. You can implement solutions in many types of projects from everyday road maintenance to capital improvements. The result is data-driven solutions, targeted investments in fewer severe crashes in your community. So start your local road safety plan today and help get people home safely.
So just a brief overview from the Federal Highway Safety Administration. So why do this locally? Well, our primary goal is to reduce crashes within our city. We also want to provide a greater awareness of roadway safety and risks within our community. We want to empower our city to incorporate safety into our routine business practices. We want to develop lasting partnerships. And we want to help our citizens feel safe and secure when traveling or even going out to check their mail during the day along the roadway. We'd like to leverage funding opportunities and prioritize our investments. And also we would like to reduce fear. Uh, we hear from our citizens quite frequently through surveys and, and other avenues that they have a fear of driving within our city sometimes. We want to work to reduce that fear as well. So how do we go about this local road safety plan? We've already gotten started. But we want to evaluate our speed limits utilizing innovative data approaches. We want to promote quieter roadways. Not only do we hear, uh, complaints about speed and reckless driving and things of that, we also hear how just, just loud the traffic is, loud mufflers, things like that. And perhaps we can explore some ordinances that might help us, uh, promote quieter roadways. We want to tailor a plan that takes into consideration Milton's unique qualities. We have roadways where horse trailers are, are coming in and out of the roadway. We have working farms. Uh, as we just heard, we just have a, a diversity of uses of our roadways within our city. We need to tailor a plan that takes that into consideration. We would like to develop a robust public education and media plan to accompany our local road safety plan. Utilize a combination of enforcement, education and engineering as well as emergency services to guide the process. And consider multiple strategies, develop an action plan to implement the solutions. An overall local road safety plan, uh, is encapsulated here. Step one is identify leadership stakeholders, which we have done. I'll share, uh, our stakeholders in just a moment. Uh, collect and analyze safety data. Uh, step three is about where we are now and we need some decision point that's made tonight before we move forward. Uh, too far into step three, but that is to choose cost-effective solutions. Step four, implement those solutions. And then step five, completion and ongoing analysis. But just a flyover of, of where we are presently. Step one is, uh, complete. We have identified our internal safety champions, uh, which would be myself and Sarah Leters, our interim Public Works Director, who's here with me. Uh, we convene the work group of Public Works, Police, Fire and Communications Staff. We've identified stakeholders. We've developed a local road safety plan vision and mission statements. Again, this is complete. Here's a list of our stakeholders, certainly our citizens, uh, this body, uh, Public Works, Police, Fire, Rescue, Communications Staff, Fulton County Schools, because we know schools have, uh, quite a bit of effect on our traffic in the morning and the evening. Uh, GDOT, because we work on so many projects with them and the Federal Highway Administration offers the template for this plan. And we've thought about perhaps also bringing onboard a consultant to help us as we move forward with the local road safety plan. But continuing with our step one progress, our local road safety plan vision statement, the city of Milton will have a transportation system that is safe, offers a diversity of travel and that allows our citizens to traverse safely and calmly throughout our city. Our local road safety plan mission statement, the city of Milton proactively strives through our local road safety plan to address roadway concerns through a combination of engineering, enforcement, education and emergency services to strategically make our roadways as safe as possible. And we also encapsulated this into our newly mentored strategic plan. Uh, specifically strategic priority number one, which is to ensure Milton's sustainability and resiliency. And in particular, goal four, which is to maintain a secure community in which people can live, work and play safely. And goal five, which is to implement a transportation infrastructure that meets our current needs, accounts for future growth and allows residents to traverse Milton in a calm, safe and efficient manner. Our step two progress, which is also complete, is to analyze the safety data. As we heard in the short video, data comes from a variety of sources. We have been very good about, um, pulling in data points, uh, historically. We have, police have especially collaborated with Public Works to pull in quite a bit of data. We've conducted a systematic analysis of that crash data and our traffic complaints. We've analyzed types of crashes and causes and again, considered the unique features of Milton's roadways. And we have conducted a citizen survey and analyzed those results. Talk about those in just a moment. But first of all, here is a snapshot of our crashes from 2015 through the end of 2020. As you can see there, 2016, 17, 18, we kind of leveled out there at just over 700 crashes. And then we started to decline quite a bit in overall crashes. And of course, 2020, we had so much less traffic on the road. We sort of kind of bottomed out there. I would like to point out something. Many communities, uh, last year experienced a large spike in injury crashes and fatalities. And as you can see, we did not experience that within our community, I suppose, of this analysis. And here are our top crash locations, uh, from 2016 to, to year-to-date 2021 through the end of March. And these were all of our areas where we had at least 30 crashes. Real surprises there, I'm sure. Especially the first one. Also a step two progress, um, in analyzing the safety data, I mentioned complaints. We have our impact or Milton Police and Citizens Together, uh, traffic complaints. These are complaints that are reported by our citizens. They're documented, uh, whenever they come in so that we can document our, our progress. And the information is relayed to our officers. But it's a little bit more than that. It's not just someone calling in saying, someone's speeding on my street and then we tell the officers and, and then they respond. Uh, typically we go out and electronically measure. We use a device called a Jamar. Uh, some of you are familiar with this. We place it in the roadway for about a week and it tells us our traffic volumes. It tells us traffic speeds, what types of vehicles are on the roadway. And then we can pull that data, we download the data and it lets us know the best time to have officers out there. So we're strategically placing our officers out there in an intelligence-led manner.
Doesn't it also let you know that there's a correlation between the people that call and complain about the speeders, but then they're also the ones that occasion?
Yeah, that's the souped-up model. We haven't got to that one yet. Uh, and just to give you a, a bit of perspective, uh, when I first came to Milton in January 2017, we were taking traffic complaints in the teens per year. And last year we filled it 60 impact complaints just related to traffic. Obviously is a concern of our citizens. And speaking of that, some of our citizen survey highlights, as we continue in the step two progress. We, the survey was conducted by our communications department. It was completed in February. We had 378 responses, 90% of which indicated they were residents of Milton. Their top concerns were distracted driving, speeding and navigating bicyclists. Most felt stressed during the evening rush hour. And their top three areas of concern geographically were the Birmingham Highway, Bethany Bend, Bethany Way, Bethany Road area and the Hopewell Cogburn Road areas. Supported adding bicycle lanes or bikeable shoulders to certain roadways within the city. 92% supported adding sidewalks or multi-use trails. And interestingly, the top three traffic safety tools suggested were more roundabouts, improved bicycle pedestrian separation from vehicles and widening roadways, adding turn lanes. And then this was also interesting, walking in areas with no sidewalks and bicycling were two significant areas of transportation stress that were indicated in the survey. Uh, Sarah, come up and discuss a little bit about the engineering component.
So while this survey wasn't, um, statistically valid, it, uh, did provide a lot of valuable input. And this is, uh, one of the questions that we broke, broke down a little bit more. And I've read these, uh, open-ended responses about three times now, uh, read through them and, um, just tried to, tried to identify what, what type of improvement, um, was suggested for improving safety and traffic flow on the roads. So again, looking at kind of those three Es that we approach problem solving with is engineering enforcement and education. And this is how those suggestions for improving safety and traffic flow, uh, spread out across those categories. Just a couple of examples of what would, some of the comments that would fall under these. Um, enforcement were speeds, truck routes, distracted drivers, sort of enforcements. The education components, there were a lot that commented on how to use a roundabout, when to yield, how to, so general, uh, roundabout usage, um, crosswalks and then bicycle and pedestrian safety and awareness. That kind of fell under that education component. And then the engineering, which is the largest percentage and will be the most, most costly to implement. Uh, those were more roundabouts, bicycle accommodations on our roads, signage marking and certain, um, treatment for curves or straightaways on the roadways. We also had another question that asked about specific roads that should be considered. And on that question, it was also an open-ended response. We got 44 different locations, um, that were identified through that. As we start looking at step three, um, wanted to look at what kind of solutions that, that would be considered with this local road safety plan. Uh, first is the, the larger cost improvements of improving operations at intersections, uh, with roundabouts, signals, turn lanes, that sort of improvement. And then we look at also, um, pavement treatments. So rumble strips, pavement markings, uh, that the bicycle accommodations would fall under, under this category. Uh, roadside improvements. Then into the signage beacon, um, the roadside, roadside signs and I, um, flashing beacons would fall under that category. And we get to the enforcement and education campaigns, the awareness. Uh, appropriate speed limits, looking at reasonable, safe and consistent speeds throughout the city. And then utilizing consultants to, to look at other, uh, the federal highway, I mentioned the proven countermeasures as well as innovative ideas and smart technology. Wanted to highlight a few of, uh, similar solutions we've looked at on some other locations throughout the city. Uh, the top left is Heritage Walk right out here. Um, we do have the Sheroes painted on the roads. Those are just installed with paint, so they are starting to wear versus, uh, putting them down in a thermoplastic material. And then have the Share the Road designation for the, the on-street cyclist. Uh, this roadway does also have the multi-use pads. Just want to highlight that project. The top middle is Birmingham Highway. Uh, DOT went in a few years ago on the curves and put in rumble strips. Uh, the, um, the indicators along the center line. And then they, they painted a larger edge white line in the curves on Birmingham Highway. The top right is coming out of the roundabout at Freemanville Providence. Uh, that's to show pedestrian crossing, medians landscaping, that sort of treatment. The bottom left is Freemanville Road, the use of a radar sign in that straightaway. That also shows some of the, uh, a portion of like a paved shoulder, what that, that looks like. Yes.
Good question on that. Do you get data from that sign? Or is it just a static where it'll tell people, hey, the visual reminder to slow down?
This one's the, the technology at that time didn't have that. I'm not sure if it's been, if there's anything new and innovative with that. But that is an older sign that, uh, was one of the first we put out. Um, and then, then the bottom middle, the use of roundabouts, uh, we also have looked at these roundabout ahead signs. They have LED lights around the outside. We have one on the Hopewell, southbound approach to Hopewell Birmingham. So looking at, at where we can use, um, LED flashing signs that are activated when a, a vehicle travels over a loop. So they don't flash all the time, just when cars are approaching. And then the bottom right is a residential traffic calming, um, measure of, uh, speed table. And then I'll turn it back to chief to pick up with step four.
What's the possible next steps? Uh, we've considered hiring a consultant, but that's versus moving forward with our, just our internal team. Uh, moving forward internally, again, with that existing data or the possibility of obtaining more robust data through a consulting firm. Set priorities, whether we go internally or externally or a combination of both. Certainly we want a media push with this. We want to let our citizens know what we're doing with this. And, uh, continue to get feedback and celebrate wins and measure progress points throughout our portion of future step four. And then step five, monitor progress monthly, quarterly, annually. Again, continue to solicit citizen feedback throughout the process. And ensure our initiatives are fused into the future comprehensive transportation plans. And then we would conclude with a report. Certainly we know that would be a living document as traffic continues to change and grow throughout our city. But this will provide a great base for us, uh, for future planning.
I think Laura may have a question.
Just could, could you go back one? I, I have a question about, um, moving forward internally, um, with the existing data or getting more robust data. Is that gonna help us, um, with the citywide speed limit possibly to have that more robust data? I don't, I don't understand that.
It, it could. And Sarah, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so as we, we start looking at that citywide speed, speed data. Yeah, so as we start looking at that citywide speed data, first thing we'll need is traffic counts, looking at speed class and volume. And then the additional data that's part of that, the expert system-type approach to setting speed limits is looking at the number of curb cuts, the visibility at driveways, the uses on the roadway. So that's all data that we would be, that would, the more we can gather through more, through the use of a consultant, would, yes, it would help in building that case.
Okay, thank you.
And I didn't know, I started working on this with Sarah. It's been, what, five years since we've got a complete count of all of our traffic volumes on all of our roadways? And there's that step five again. So we have a few options for this body to consider. Option one would be to move the local road safety plan forward with our internal team only. There are some pros to that. We have historic knowledge of the roadways and our citizen concerns. We have field expertise in-house. There's no immediate fiscal impact. And it moves the plan forward immediately. Setbacks to it, excuse me. No fully dedicated resource to the local road safety plan. Certainly, this is a priority for staff, but a priority among priorities. So having more folks in would help. But with our internal-only option, no fully dedicated resource. Less robust data collection, as we just discussed. No third-party validation of the issues or data. And it takes a bit more time to complete the steps. Option two would be to move the local road safety plan forward by hiring consultants with expertise in engineering and perhaps public relations. This would allow that more robust data, positive messaging regarding progress in overall roadway safety, enhanced expertise for in-depth problem solving, and take less time to complete the steps. The cons, take a little time for the RFP process, certainly. The fiscal considerations of bringing in a consultant and finding the needed expertise based on the very unique roadways that we have in Milton. And a third option would be to move the local road safety plan forward with a combined internal and external team. That would still bring in that historical knowledge of our roadways and our citizen concerns, combined with the enhanced resources and data collection that a consultant could bring in. Combined field expertise, third-party validation of the data and issues. It would offer a streamlined approach, dedicated internal, external team approach to the local road safety plan, kind of be synergistic and move things forward. Of course, the cons of that, fiscal impact. Recruiting specifically needed expertise, again, based on our unique roadways. And only incremental steps can be taken until we get the consultants in place. And that would be the staff recommendation to utilize that more robust data. Again, it's been several years since we've gotten a complete road count in Milton. And some more innovative approaches, other than the traditional, may help our case as we move forward. Been speaking with our external partners about some roadway changes that we find through the data. With that, questions? And does any other point that you may have?
Yeah, just two quick questions. On the cost, do we have any idea what the cost is on those two options? And then also, since we're using a lot of state roadways, is there any state funding that could happen? So those are my two questions.
So on the cost, including the traffic counts and the portion of a study, we had previously identified around $125,000 for that. And we do have some allocated currently that would definitely cover the counts. And so that would be for the two options, the internal and external team, that option three. And then for the state, the, you know, the local road safety plan is actually one of those proven countermeasures that is on FHWA's website. We are, we're looking at opportunities. We did, at the last council meeting, approve a consent item for applying for some, from state money, sorry, state funds for roadway striping and signage. So that's going to be a reoccurring opportunity. As far as the plan, not aware of any programs that would fund a plan that are, that currently exist.
Yeah, I think, I know when we were looking at the budget last year, we allocated that $125,000 for that project. Have we done anything? I know we were trying to find the right resource for that, right consultant. Have we started on that? Are we still kind of at the, looking at what we're going to do? And that's why we're discussing it again as part of this?
We're about midway through the process. We're on step three of five or three of six. We're at the point right now where if we're going to hire a consultant, this is the time to do it.
It's still within the same cost timeframe, do you know, Steve, cost dollars-wise?
Currently, this year, I think we had $55,000 allocated towards it. Until we scope this thing out and put it out in the street, we're not going to know exactly what it'll cost. And obviously, you'll have another bite at that apple because it would come back before you again. But I think that Sarah feels that we could at least get the, a lot of the data we need under this year's $55,000 allocation. We haven't spent any money on this yet at all.
Laura?
Oh, yeah. No, I do, but Joe had his hand up first.
All right, I'll say Paul had his hand up first, so, you know.
I had a couple of quick questions. Sarah, there were two things that stuck out to me in the presentation. One was the number of incidents at Highway Nine and Bethany. It was twice the number of the next count. And I know that there's a long-term plan for that. My question is, is there a shorter-term plan where we can begin to address some of those concerns so we can begin to affect that count more immediately? And in similar question is, we talked about the 44 locations that were identified by the community where they expressed some concerns. Is there duplication? Is there one or two that stand out that we can also, prior to the full-blown study, begin to address some of those concerns from the community?
Okay, first to answer the question about Nine at Bethany Bend. Yes, the longer-term solution does separate those intersections. We do have a, working with the state, a permitted signal revision for improving that intersection. It's just a matter of the, the state has said they're going to follow through with the implementation of that, that they would fund that. We helped develop the improvement. So we do have a permit. It's just a matter of getting the work scheduled. That's something I will follow up with them on. And then the
First, when we add the impact of our new public safety complex over there, I'm sure it only compounds the traffic issue hopefully in a positive way. But obviously, the traffic needs to be addressed when we're dispatching our safety teams to fund.
That improvement looked at the Bethany Bend eastbound right turn, putting a phase that would control that right turn and would be able to do a no ride on red during certain times with a red arrow. So that was the, that was the signal plan that was approved. And then, yes, we'll take a look at those specific locations that were identified. I do recall several of them had multiple comments about the same issues on the same roadways. So that's definitely something we can look at.
So I really, I like the hybrid approach because just in the projects that we see, we see the consultants bring, you know, an aspect. But, you know, you know the roads, you know the citizens, you know, as we call it in CFAC, the hot-button topics, and you know the anthills not to step in. So I really like that approach and I support it. And I mean, when I think of $125,000, this issue affects every Milton citizen. I mean, I can't think of anyone that I would talk to that would say, we don't have an issue with our road safety. So I look forward to getting this going forward. And then also on the stakeholders, the Milton Equestrian Committee would be a great add to that list. You know, there's a lot of open road neighbors that we want to make sure they can get their mail. They also own some of the bigger parcels that see the road, you know, the road noise, the road, everything that we want to try to, you know, alleviate and keep these larger parcels. So that would be my request to add them as a stakeholder.
So Chief, you mentioned the fact that we couldn't do this internally because we'd just be adding this to a list of priorities that, you know, was already long or, you know, has other work that needs to be done. Do we have any idea of the level of effort that would be required to complete the local road safety plan? In other words, is this 1,000 hours worth of work? Is it 50 hours worth of work? Is it 10,000 hours worth of work?
Be glad to answer my portion. And I think Sarah could also add a little bit more about the technicality of it. But trying to pull in some of these more innovative approaches, like counting driveways and curb cuts and distance and things like that, that can get very intensive. A little bit out of my wheelhouse, I guess, how many hours that would be, but extremely intensive workload. Can you add anything to that?
I wasn't, I wasn't seeking a specific answer, okay? Here's what's sort of got me concerned. The name of the program itself, the Local Road Safety Program. If we push this aside, we don't act on it right now, then the optics are, we don't have a local road safety program. And that sounds concerning to me, okay? Now, I know that the name may just be coincidental in terms of the way it conjures up. What, Milton doesn't have a local road safety program? How is this possible? So it sounds probably worse than it is. But I'm also a little bit concerned that every time we come up with something like this, our solution is hire a consultant, okay? And I would like to think that this is one of those subjects that is, as you pointed out, I mean, it's close to what we know. I mean, this is our city. These are our roads. We know these better than any consultant could know coming in. And so to me, this seems like an opportunity for us to provide some immediate action and leadership and work. And so I'm trying to figure out what is a higher priority than this that we are working on right now? Because if, I would agree, if you got 10,000 things and you just add the 10,001st thing, you're not going to make progress on any of them. But this just sounds like something that should have some priority associated with it.
And it certainly is. It's just, we can do more with the more data that we have. The more we know, the more we can do. We can go with the data that we have internally. And we have spent a lot of time on that and will continue to do that and set a plan moving forward based on what we have. But again, touching all of our roadways and that is a bit more intensive.
So we have a concept and software development. We call it the minimal viable product. You don't try to build a car in one fell swoop. You build a scooter, then you build a motorcycle, and then you build a no-frills car, and then you build a Porsche, right? So incrementally improve over time. Is this the kind of a project where we could come out with certain things with the data that we have and then improve our action plan or our plans over time? It's, we get more data, we get more focused on the data that we could get our hands on?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just one comment to a little bit what Paul had said. Living over by Bethany Bend and Highway Nine and that intersection, I can tell you, every morning, if I try turning left to get onto Highway Nine, the people that are eastbound are going to go south on Highway Nine. And I'm assuming that's where you said most of the issues are. I almost get hit every time I'm either hitting my horn because all they're doing is looking to the left, seeing the traffic's clear. They don't even look across the street and they pull. And I, like I said, I could count, I could give you a count. I know Steve has heard from me and, because it just keeps happening over and over again. So it's, I'm glad to hear that the state is recognizing that. If you need us to work with our elected officials to try to push that along at the state level, please engage us because that one, to me, that intersection's been bad. I've lived here 24 years. That had huge accident count back when we were Fulton County. So it continues to be a concern from a safety standpoint. And personally, like I said, my wife, myself, and a lot of neighbors have all almost been hit trying to just follow the green light with the green arrow to the left. It's an ongoing issue.
My way home as well, so I certainly, certainly understand.
I just, one last con, I just think that if we gather more data, and I just want to make sure I understand this, which is why we would need a consultant? Is that kind of right?
Primarily.
Okay. So we gather more data and that sets us up for success more? I mean, that's what we're thinking, is that that data, you know, when we have to go and present our case to whoever the traffic safety gods are, that we'll be able to have a better case with more data. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just to build on what Laura's saying, obviously, the value of the consultant is faster data gathering and to Laura's point, then you can execute against that. But is there also, are you expecting, Chief, that there will likely be some innovative solutions that are not a part of our everyday routine solutions in Milton? That we can get a best practices from other comparable cities?
Yes, and that would be part of the scope. We are looking for innovative solutions and innovative firms.
Are those parts, if we were to take those two primary targets, is it something that necessarily isn't a full-blown consultant engagement, but it could be engaged for those parts?
Certainly, we could prioritize our areas and not do a citywide count or that.
Well, I'm not suggesting we don't do a citywide count. I think it's important that we address all four corners of our city. But I, obviously, looking for efficiencies, if we are going to choose to go forward with a consultant, maybe there's portions that are, like you suggested in the hybrid. Would you look to some of the expediency that comes from a consultant for those two particular areas? The counts, as well as the nuance of the innovative solutions?
Yes, absolutely. There's a third piece of this that I think is going to be a challenge. And that's convincing GDOT to accept our expert approach to this as opposed to the 85th percentile. While they do accept that and Sarah has experience with it, that's going to be a big push for us. And if we can get some expertise on the best way to provide that information to them, that will be very helpful for us. Because normally, we put our sensors out and whatever the 80, 85% of the people are going at is generally considered the safe speed.
Yeah, good point. Thanks, Steve.
Just one last comment, kind of to bridge off from what Joe had said. I think it's real important that if we do engage consultants, it's very specific what we want them to do. And then we, as staff, actually work with them. So it's not the consultant just giving us the data. I think, I think using a blended approach, even as consultants, if that's the direction we go, we work with them because we've had other instances where people come forward and it's the consultant's approach. And we have no input of really what do we as a city really think? So from an effectiveness standpoint, that would be my comment. Just consider that when we look at how we're going to engage.
Right, and for staff, that is very important as we've had internal conversations, that we do stay involved shoulder to shoulder. We see pulling them in more as a partner rather than go do your own thing, bring us back the data. We want to be engaged in the process.
Okay. You guys need direction from us?
Yes, please.
Sounds like option three, I was thinking.
Option three is what you guys recommended, is that, no, Joe, you brought up, you know, the consultants.
No, no. If more data is going to be beneficial to the right plan, I think we need, so.
Okay, that option three. Thank you, guys.
We will proceed forward. Thank you so much.
Okay, can we feel, please, call the next item?
The final item is presentation of building services. Mr. Bob Bishimi. And Bernadette, rather, Bernadette Harvall.
You can say Bob already had his.
Yeah, I mean, come on. The one thing, the one thing I was going to say, Bob was, I say, Bob was, eyes were getting big, or, you know, I could see he was drooling when he saw that.
were getting big, or, you know, I could see he was drooling when he saw that, that movie, that little video, so don't get any ideas, Bob.
Next time, Bob.
Okay, well, we save the best for last, a discussion about cost benefit analysis and opportunity costs and revenue comparisons. So tonight, we're here to discuss building inspection and plan review services and the results of a staff research regarding outsourcing these services versus providing them in-house. On the agenda tonight, you'll see a quick rundown on what we're going to discuss. We will review the background of the building inspection and plan review functions, as well the methodology behind the research we completed. Then we will, we will review the cost analysis for in-house staffing and the revenue comparisons under each scenario. After that, we will discuss the advantages and disadvantages of both in-house staffing and outsourcing for you to consider. We will wrap up with some main takeaways and input from Bob Buscemi regarding the current state of community development and the department's future under either scenario. And finally, Bob, Steve and I will be here to field any questions you may have, and then we will be looking for guidance from council on how we should proceed with the next steps to fulfill these functions moving forward. Here's just a little background on the topic for you. Milton has outsourced these services since incorporation. Our current contract is with SafeBilt Georgia LLC, and it is valid through May 31st, 2021. Back in November, council asked staff to research the benefits and opportunity costs of continuing to provide these services through the outsourcing model versus traditional in-house staffing model. As a first step, Milton staff developed a list of necessary personnel, training, and capital needs. We worked with a team at the Carl Vinson Institute of Government to ensure we covered all necessary areas. The team at the Carl Vinson Institute is a wonderful partner to local governments in areas including training, research, and collaboration on projects such as this one. And for just $1,000, our team looked over our employee specs and other stated needs and compared to other cities with a focus on Sandy Springs as they have a similar service level and proximity to Milton. Here you can see the final cost analysis for providing building inspection and plan review functions in-house. This includes the hiring of a chief building official, someone for the building plan review function, fire plan review, a building inspector, as well as a permit technician. In addition, we estimated the cost for training, uniforms, insurance, vehicle repair and maintenance, fuel, monthly cellphone expenses, and other supplies. And finally, we figured the annual expenses to maintain an additional two vehicles in the community development fleet. So the bottom line, in order for us to provide all of those items, would be approximately $465,238, and that will be a key figure that'll play a role in the rest of the presentation. Before we move on to those comparisons in the cost, I just wanted to take a minute to explain that there are other expenses to consider related to these functions. They were not included in the cost analysis as Milton will be responsible for those expenses regardless of the model you choose to move forward with. Some of those expenses include the salaries, benefits, and training associated with other community development, public works, and fire staff who are directly involved in these services, as well as that of administrative staff such as those in city manager department, city clerks department, finance, and human resources that support these functions. We also have building expenses, including annual depreciation, utilities, and furniture, as well as supplies, IT equipment and software expenses, and legal expenses to consider when we talk about building inspection and plan review services. Once we have the estimate for in-house staffing, that $465,238 figure, we moved on to the revenue comparison. The table on your left shows historical actuals for FY 2012 through FY 2020, and a projection for this fiscal year based on activity through March 31st. As you can see, historically, Milton has paid approximately 69% to 70% of revenues collected for building inspection and plan review services to a third party to provide these services. When comparing the current contract to a Milton in-house staffing model, the city would retain an average of $422,286 in revenues annually to help cover the overall costs related to providing these services, including what we just talked about before, as well as the positions. Milton recently put out an RFP for these services, and as you can see here, the best and final offer is closer to a split of 54%, 64% as opposed to the 70/30 on the previous slide. So I just wanted to give you an insight into what that would look like as well. We ran those numbers, and under that model, Milton would retain approximately, on average, $124,538 of revenue in-house to cover those expenses. So under either model, you can see that the Milton cost at 465,238 is less than what we've been offered to do this through a third party at this time. But as with any service, there are both advantages and disadvantages to each delivery method. We can't just consider the numbers straight across the board. An in-house staffing model provides greater control over personnel with the ability to decide if the candidate's qualifications and demeanor are right for the team. There's also direct control over other service delivery and quality. Additionally, city staff can be cross-trained to help with other tasks as needed. This can also provide for greater succession planning within the department. Finally, there's the ability for a city to retain additional revenues to offset other related expenses as we just discussed. Some universal advantages to outsourcing include potential access to a larger talent pool. The best example of this would be our legal team currently in the range of discipline areas their office covers, and then the range of services they can provide for us. Another advantage of outsourcing is that costs will never exceed revenues. When you are paying based on a percentage of revenues collected, this is a guaranteed safeguard. With a contract, staffing backups are traditionally built into the contract, so there would be less downtime related to paid time off for contract employees. In addition, the city would not be responsible for any training-related expenses. Staffing levels can be easily increased or decreased based on the workload needs, and personnel who are not working out or are not a good fit for the organization can be replaced just by a phone call. And then we have some of the disadvantages that we need to consider under both models. In-house staff plays added administrative responsibilities on HR as well as the department head through hiring, training, and supervising. There is the potential for expenses to exceed revenues, which could result in permit fee changes in this scenario if they were to be continuous. Training and potential staffing changes could lead to some disservice disruptions. On the outsourcing side, you must consider the administrative time dedicated to managing the contract and the deliverables laid out, as well as the bid process itself. And on this side, you must also consider the potential service disruptions related to staffing changes not requested or unrelated to the city, such as over, turnover at the company itself and training schedules that are driven by that company rather than the city. Finally, there is no ability to cross-train contracted staff or utilize them in a capacity outside their agreed-to terms. So the main takeaways we have identified through this analysis is first, Milton's revenue collections show that the city can provide these services for less than the current revenue share and the revenue share under the best and final offer in the last RFP process. With this reduced expense does come both the advantages and disadvantages we just discussed. The key advantage under the staffing model would be the ability to cross-train employees, have greater internal coverage, and increase perspective for succession planning. And the key advantage for outsourcing would be the flexibility in staffing levels. So now I will turn it over to Bob Buscemi, and he can discuss from the department perspective what their views are for the new book.
Okay, so from a department perspective, they tend to lean more towards in-house staffing.
Can I, Bob, can I break in for one second too? Just out of, you know, I know Gary and Dale are here and all this. Just want to make sure, you know, everybody knows, this is all, you know, based on a cost. This is a cost benefits, and it's no reflection on any performance or whatever. So just to make sure that we clarify that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But, but from the, the department perspective, I tend to lean that way because I can do more cross-training. I can utilize the staff for different functions. I got a great desire right now to have a site inspector. I could probably get some of that staff to do other, other tasks as things build up and things are always fluid within the department. It's easier for me to get people moving around. Of course, the cost model shows that it's, it's a great benefit to the city to do it that way, based on the current, the current model. So I just wanted the council to know that it's, it's something I think would really benefit my department from, from that perspective of really utilizing their services and, and getting a better, a better team put together.
So Bob, do we get any citizen feedback on their experience for these services since they are outsourced? Do we keep tabs on the kind of feedback that we're getting from our citizens based on the job that SafeBilt does for us?
I don't do any surveys or anything like that. I mean, I don't, I, I, if there's a complaint.
Do we have no idea if they're doing a good job or a bad job?
There's always people that do a complaint, and if there's a complaint, we'll deal with it.
Not here in Milton. People don't complain.
If there's a complaint, we'll, we'll look at it, and, but overall, I, I can't really say that, you know, I'm, I'm receiving a lot of complaints on SafeBilt. I'm not.
Based on historical numbers, how often does the number of requests or the amount of work exceed the staffing capability that you planned for? Because I see the biggest advantage to outsourcing this as an ability to expand or contract to meet the need, okay? If there's no need, we're not paying for anything. And if there's twice the need, they're there, SafeBilt is there and has the resources to react to that. So how could we tell if that's really the case? Do we have an average time to complete?
Well, let's, let's think of it this way. I've been, I've been here for 10 years. I've been working with them for 10 years in that department. There's never been a time where we've had the need for two building officials or more plan examiners or more field inspectors. We have the team, there's the four, four of them, and they work in that team. If the volume increases, basically, they just do more. If, if somebody goes on PTO, they're out. It's not like I get a replacement to say, okay, wait, I need a, you know, it's not, that, that whole philosophy of, okay, we're going to blame more people as we need them. If that was truly happening, then I would see it. You know, over a 10-year period, you would see, you know, staffing increasing and staffing decreasing as, as needed. Right now, I've only seen this team, and they've done a great job with it. I'm not going to say they haven't. They've done an outstanding job maintaining it, but there's really never been the need to increase or decrease that team.
But, okay, that's interesting.
Hasn't been.
But we don't pay a fixed fee on a monthly basis for the resources that we get from SafeBilt. It's completely based on they're taking revenue that gets generated as part of the services that are required, right? In other words, we're not writing SafeBilt a check every month for whether or not they're doing work or not. We only, they only get paid if there's work to do, correct?
They only get a percentage of what we take in.
Right.
For permit fees. So whatever that percentage is.
So we've never.
They get a cut of it.
Okay, so.
Whether it is, well, yeah, I mean, the theory, I guess, is if we're getting more in, there's more work.
Right, but what if there's no work? Doesn't cost us anything, right?
Well, I guess to some degree, that's true. I mean, you know, I can only look at the historical data that's being shown, and that's what I looked at.
What I'm trying to understand, Bob.
Over the last 10 years, there's never been a period where that data has gone down to the point where it's, they're working and they're not getting paid. That we, it's been, if you look at the historical data over 10 years, and this year, we're, we're bursting out of the seams. I think my revenue in the first quarter of this year has exceeded the 2020 revenue. So that's how much revenues have been going up because of work. And in the last 10 years, there's never been a period where they haven't made a substantial profit based on the amount of money we've been bringing in. There's never a period where we're sitting here with nothing to do.
Well, whether or not it's profitable is their issue, not ours. All we know is that we give them a certain amount of revenue for the work that they perform, okay? So I don't want to suppose that it makes them very profitable or anything else. I guess the other way of asking, what I'm trying to understand is, based on your model for bringing this internal, and you listing as your number one advantage for that model is a cross-training opportunity, how much slack time do you believe that these resources are going to have so that they're available to work on something other than this job?
I think they can have quite a bit of time. I, I really think, even with the volumes we have, that there is still available time that I could probably get them to fill in on other things that, you know, when we need to, in other positions that I may not need to come back and ask for, because I think I can get them while they're out in the field to do additional services for the city, like site inspection work that I find a big void in right now, and I'm going to need to fill that void. So I, I really think I can probably have much more flexibility within the department to have more of these things covered. And just as a result, we're also showing the models that we'd be saving the city a whole lot of money. So I didn't want to come and say, geez, you know, this is going to cost me an additional, you know, $400,000 a year. It's sort of, I think, with the benefit that I get and the cost savings that we get, it'd really be beneficial for the department as a, as a whole. That's how I was kind of looking at it.
Right, I, I just want to be careful. We're not saving any money. We're increasing the amount of revenue that we get. Right?
Right.
Okay.
Let me ask Joe, are you, you know, looking at it where, let's just assume, and hopefully this doesn't happen, but let's assume that the economy just crashed, you know, we had, and, and we got no revenue from permit, permitting and, and whatnot. We had staff, then it would cost us money. You know, again, that was an advantage with the outsourcing because, you know, they absorbed the, the overhead costs, you know, if we did dip down.
I think taking on headcount is always something that we need to be overly careful on, because once you commit to headcount, it's hard to uncommit unless you lay off people. The city has no history of laying off anyone, okay? Which means that once we commit, we're committed. And what we're doing is we're taking a partner that gives us this fungible capability that we don't have to worry about. All we have to worry is that they participate in the revenue share. And so we're going to trade that out for a commitment in headcount, and I want to make sure that that's the right thing to do. Because if what you're saying, your number one advantage is that you can cross-train these people, what we're really doing is we're finding a way to augment our staff for other needs. Because if the opportunity is great, which you just said it is, then we don't really need a headcount for this job. We need a headcount for this job and several other jobs. And so I just want to make sure I understand that. It's not that I'm against headcounts. I just want to be sure that we commit to the right things.
Can I jump in just for a second? Couple of quick things I just want to make sure that we're clear on. So our current contract is, is a service level agreement. It's not based on the individuals, and I just want to make sure that's clear. We don't pay for X number of staffed employees, and that's why, one of the things we point out is, one of the benefits of having that relationship is the flexibility you're pointing to exactly. You can, you can expand or contract quite easily. And just like you said, if it were to go to zero, it doesn't affect us. The other piece just I wanted to touch on, Bob has much more experience, obviously, here than I do, but I can tell you, since I've been city manager, I've been satisfied with the work coming out of SafeBilt. They, they have met their SLAs, and, and I have not, while I've received a couple of complaints over the six years, I receive a couple of complaints anywhere over, over the six years, so I just want to be clear on that. Anything, any decision you all make, please do so with the understanding that SafeBilt's been a good partner for the time that they've been with us.
Right, yeah, that's, was my point earlier. This is just about the cost and efficiencies, okay?
So my, as I recall, the SafeBilt, there was some accreditation that they, that was lacking. Is, is that still the case, or has that been?
So it, we, tonight's decision, I just want to make sure I frame this correctly. Tonight's decision is whether or not you want us to move farther forward with bringing this in-house. It's not in-house or whether or not we go with the current contractor. If you decide against in-house, we'll be putting this back out to bid again.
Okay, that's, so, and then my next question is, as, as far as bringing this in-house, what, what needs to be done to, to do that? How long would that take and?
Well, the, the current contract runs up at the end of May. Well, the, the current contract runs up at the end of May. And if, if the council says, Bob, it's, it's okay to bring it in-house, then we would have to advertise the positions, interview and, and get them in-house. And right now, we're, we're converting over to CityView so that the training period would, would, would just match up perfectly for that. So if, if we had to do it, I think this is the right time to do it.
Rick?
Go back to the financials, kind of show us the, the revenue cost.
Good stuff, right?
Yeah.
Go to our current model.
So if you look at the current model, right now, they're approximately getting about 70% of the intake. And the, the variance on the 2021 would be a, sort of a, a positive to the city for about $416,000. Of course, you know, yes, we use it for other purposes, but that's, that's still a additional money that the city will have to allocate towards other, other items that would be associated with this.
The best and final offer we had in the current bid process, which tightens that variance a little.
Okay, so what you're saying is you go back out to bid, we may not be paying 70% or whatever the number is.
Our best guess would be that it'd be somewhere between these two figures that have been offered to us historically.
And the re, the revenues, just so I understand, those are permit fees. So as we do construction and building and people are home permits, that's the revenue. That's how, under probably any contract, if we outsource, we're going to be paying a percentage of that for the services we receive. And then we just need to make service level agreement, make sure that we have the right level and continue to assess, they need to actually, whoever that contractor is, provide the correct resources and expertise for us to make sure that things are going efficiently. I know Steven said that so far, we haven't had an issue.
Haven't, so.
It's, it sounds like, I, I mean, obviously, there's pros and cons. I mean, the, the cons are, if, like I said before, if the economy just tanked and, you know, we had X number of employees and $400,000, $500,000 worth of overhead a year, to Joe's point, you know, heads, because we wouldn't want to let them go, it would be a negative. Positive is, you know, again, we would not only save the money, but then to Bob's point, you also may have some employees, staff that could do some other stuff too. So, so there's some, some pros to it too.
Yeah, my biggest thing, I guess, was, you know, I feel like this has been talked about kind of before maybe, and, you know, SafeBill has probably been great for a new city, you know, as you're, as you're starting out and stuff. I think as we see, we are continuing to grow, and this is more of a talking about the future, not necessarily now. But a lot of, you know, I think the biggest pro that I saw was the quote of direct control over service quality. And that is, a lot of these employees, a lot of the residents don't know that they're, they're interacting with these people on a day-to-day basis, and they're not city employees. And I think we've probably, probably outgrown this, and I think I'm perfectly fine bringing it. As long as you think you can hire four people within six weeks or something, or should we, or should we extend it or something, you know? I, but, you know.
That's some potentials for maybe, you know, just filling the gap if either way we go regarding whether it needs to be an RFP put on the street or in-house hiring, to be able to do that seamlessly and not have any service disruptions.
Laura?
Okay, so how does CityView, tell me, you made the comment that this ties, ties in with CityView. How does that help?
Well, CityView is going to be doing, it's a good time because we're transferring over to CityView, which is electronic plan review. So there's going to be a learning curve on both sides, whether we, if we, if we keep the current provider, then we're going to train them on how to use CityView. If we get new staff, we would just go ahead and start training them how to do CityView. So I wouldn't want to train the current provider how to do it, and then six months from now say, oh, wait guys, you know, I'd like to come back and do it, because I have all this training period that I have to do to do it. So it's, the timing wise, it's kind of working out, because I'm going to have to train them either way. So then we would train them on the new system and kind of get, get that, get that moving along. So I, it, it seems to be like both lining up at the same time for me.
But anybody else? Rick?
In your staffing level, you're saying you think you're for full-time with the breakdown of the position?
Yep, which would be a, a building official, a plan review, inspector, the, the site inspector, and then the technician up at the front window. And the technician's a very important position, because it's really the face of the city. When people come in, they interact with that technician. And it, I think it'd be important for people to kind of, you know, connect with that, that individual on a long-term basis.
That person, Bob, is a credentialed person, that's, that's somebody who used to dealing with the community, but also has the expertise of the technical side, correct?
Yeah, they'd have a certification to do it from IBC, and then they'd be able to, to do it. But it, it'd be nice to have that person as a long-term, because it's really, truly the face of our city, and that's, they interact up front all the time. Those are the people. And the last couple of months with COVID, yes, that's been disappeared, but we're reopening and everything is coming back again, and I think that's an important position. So that's, that's something I think I would take very serious on feeling to make sure that we have somebody who really can be a long-term face for the city.
Fire plan, is the fire plan review, is that something that's done in conjunction with our fire marshal?
Yes, so the, right now, they, SafeBill farms out the fire plan review portion of the work. It's, it's farmed out to somebody else. And, and that, that portion of the work would be brought in-house too, through our fire staff. So Alex, the city fire marshal, would be working on it. He does some limited reviews, but at this point, he would just be doing them all. And actually, he's awesome, so I, I think his, his assistance more full-time would be even better, because if there is any one complaint that I've gotten from SafeBill, it's the time and the connection that it takes to do the fire reviews. And, and I've been, I have been receiving some complaints on that portion, because they, they mail them out, and they have to wait for them to come back, and there's no, there's no real connection with somebody who wants that or has a question, how do, how do I connect to that individual?
So can he take on that additional, sorry?
Yes.
That he has capacity to take on that additional work?
Yeah, we inserted all of his needs into this formula. So that's all taken care of. We, we worked with Alex and said, look, you know, what do we need to do to, to handle that work? And that is in there, right?
So we have discussed with the fire department their needs, and this considers 39% of a full-time ask. And we've also looked at it from the perspective of a part-time person. So if you went with the part-time, it would just be reducing benefits with that same salary, which is 39% of a full-time employee, in addition to Alex's time.
But going back on Joe's point, you know, the last 10 years have been great, right? Boom, 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 boom. I guess my question is, because I am more in favor of bringing it in, in-house, as long as you're good with it. But under a worst-case scenario, let's say we're down 20, 20%, do the numbers still work if we're down, let's say, 20% in average recession?
You're getting, at that best and final offer, you're getting pretty tight in what we experienced last year and way back in 2012.
Okay.
And again, these fees would be able to go towards some of the things we're already covering through tax dollars and things like that. So then you'd pick back up in those years under this scenario if you didn't lay someone off with tax dollars.
Okay, because I, I mean, I just feel better as long as we, we plan on that and the number still.
It'll seem to work, yeah.
Anybody else?
Or could I just add one last clarifying thing on this? You can never turn a profit on these fees, and I just want to make sure that, that, especially the people listening at home right now, understand that. E, even if we were to bring this house and we retain it, th, those fees have to go towards the operation, and you are not going to collect enough fees to cover the entirety of the, the building services operation. So I just want to be very clear on that. We are not turning a profit on it.
And just to clarify that, those, that money can be directed, go to the department and the service in that section for our citizens. And if there is access, or there won't be access, but it could actually lower the rates, I guess, you know, one way or the other, our citizens will get full value. Is that safe to say?
They will. You'll, we'll, we would start offsetting other fixed costs associated with the operation. We could offset the overhead of the area of the building that they occupy, the cost for HVAC, the cost for computers, other, other sorts of, of overhead that you'll deal with related to the operation. But our, we wouldn't, not that you'd want to do this, but we'd never raise, raise our fees enough probably to cover the full extent of the operation.
I, I maybe, maybe I'm slow tonight. So figure that you're, you're, when you say that, Steve, you've got a figure in there that shows, here's what our cost would be, but the revenue number was greater than that. They, it can't cover, it would never cover the full apartment. Are you talking about the entire community development, or are you talking about just the inspections? Because I, the way I read it is, we would be covering more than covering just from a salary standpoint, but I know there's other, other costs that would void the extra dollars too that would be allocated. That's the way I'm reading it. Am I looking at it wrong?
No, and I understand where you're coming from. The costs that they're showing here are the costs for the contract and just the contract. The, there are other costs that fall outside that, that contract, and that's, that's what I'm, what I'm alluding to. And I, I only talked about some of the building overhead. You're, you're not recouping the costs associated with, with Bob Buscemi's role or Dale's role, or in some cases, my role, in addition to the cost of, of the overhead.
Okay, so you're just talking about apportionment of where those dollars, whole bucket is going to be spent, no matter where it goes. What we saw is today, this is what we're spending, 70% goes to a contractor, 30% up in-house.
It does, I think if I'm understanding it correctly. And what that, that additional percentage would do is offset the other, the already taxpayer-funded expenses.
But it's just not allocated with that contract.
Would it be better to clarify, those numbers, we don't, can't look at those as profit or additional revenue? Those are savings, really. Is that fair to say that?
That could actually help offset some of the other costs.
Either savings or.
Utilizing in the city that is sort of unrealized on.
But it's not going, I guess what I'm saying is, we're not going to cost, it's not going to cost more than what we're taking in. But those, those funds will be reallocated to additional that aren't actually filled out when we've been looking at this.
Or savings, the way.
Well, saving, but Steven said they'd be deployed, so.
Let me offer up, I, I'm not going to get granular as far as the merits, but what I can tell you is sort of the, the bigger picture with respect. What we're talking about is fee. Pay for this service. Right now, the service is a, is a mixture of both external resources by way of a contract and then internal, both fixed costs as well as sort of attendance costs, the cost of the heat and air of the city of Milton to deliver this. So when it comes in-house, it's the same paradigm. It's just that the cost is maybe calculated differently with fixed employee costs as well as all the intended service costs as well. It's, it's the same cost factor, it's just an external cost versus an internal. The law says, and, and, and city manager is right, if we're going to commit air on what the fees are, it's going to be on the air of not charging as much as the service cost, because if you charge more than the service cost, it's an illegal tax.
Joe, did you?
Well, the only thing I want to say is, it's very unusual to find a job or a task that is, it's more beneficial to the organization to outsource it. It's, it can be done, it's unusual. So it's always easier to find, to staff something in-house. Nine times out of 10, you're going to save yourself money, you're going to do it, you know, you've got more control, okay? This is a longstanding service that we've outsourced. I would agree, the city of Milton sort of shed its outsourcing tendencies back in 2009, 2010. It was like the first or second year I was around. But, but we did that with some pretty careful analysis. What I want to make sure we do for future topics like this, when we're going to be adding headcount to an organization and making a permanent commitment to that headcount, because that's essentially what we're doing when we say we're going to pull it in-house, we need to be much more exact and much more detailed with our analysis. Just real, on the one page that had any kind of financial analysis, and I'm sure Bernadette, there's a lot more that you did share with us. I, I, I know that. But in the 10 years of history that you showed, there were a couple of years where it was a break-even proposition, right? And so that just.
That's only when we projected some of the best and finals that we got.
I would just suggest that in the future, you give us the upside, you give us the downside, you give us the most likely side in that analysis, so that we can be a little bit more exact and, and not worry about some things that didn't show up on the page.
So, I didn't know if you wanted to go back to it at all.
No, no, it's okay, Bernadette. I, I, this isn't a matter of trust. It's that I, I trust you guys have thought this through. These meetings aren't necessarily for us to dive into the details at, at that level. It's for us to give you some direction. I want to give you the right direction. It's also for the benefit of the public, who's trying to understand why the city, after 15 years of doing it one way, would all of a sudden do it another way. And so we're trying to help them understand why we want to have a change in direction. So that's, that would be my feedback.
Okay, anybody else? We have a, a direction, guys?
I'm comfortable bringing it in-house. I, I like all, I, I'm comfortable with the data too. I thought it was a great analysis, but I also like having the control. We're at that stage in our city.
I agree. Okay, with bringing it in.
Okay, and I do want to also, you know, make a statement too, that, and you guys have said, and I think everybody, SafeBill, this is no reflection on SafeBill's performance or SafeBill company or all of our, you know, SafeBill's employees. You know, they've done a good job, so this is, is a dollars and cents fiscal responsibility and, and efficiency for our citizens. Anything else? Yeah, thank you guys for all you are.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Okay, we'll adjourn.